We'll get started. It's Wednesday, July 26, 2023, and I'm calling the -- to order the Monroe County Board of Commissioners meeting. This is hybrid. We have Commissioner Jones and me here, present in the Nat U-Hill Room, and Commissioner Thomas is joining us virtually. Commissioner Thomas, would you please read the Commissioner's public statement? Commissioner Thomas, can you hear me?
I can. Thank you. We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear, and we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our public school systems, both RBD and MCCSC.
Thank you. It's now time for department updates. Can we start with Ms. Killig? Good morning. It's nice to see you in person.
Good morning. Thank you. Good to see you as well. So COVID updates with XBB 1.16. This variant is currently the highest level worldwide. We are monitoring two new variants, EG5 and XBB 2.3, as these are increasing in number. In Monroe County, there were zero confirmed COVID-19 hospitalizations for the weekend in July 15, and the Public Health Clinic located on Miller Drive is hosting a back-to-school vaccine clinic on Saturday, August 12 from 8 to 11 a.m.
Thank you. Is there -- we'll see you later for some stuff. Right. Is there any other department with an update? Mr. Cron.
Good morning. I just wanted to give everyone an update. We're currently experiencing some network connectivity issues with the PC that runs our Zoom meetings, so there may be some intermittent lag. So I apologize for the inconvenience, and once business concludes today, we'll be digging through that system to figure out what's going on there.
Thank you very much. Is Chris Meyer with us? I think she wanted to also provide.
She is. Good morning.
I don't see you.
Yeah, let me -- hang on. Let me turn on the video.
Oh, hi.
Can you see me? I'm here in Ellisville. Sorry, I had to be here this morning. Couldn't join you in person. But I wanted to just give you an update on rural transit for, you know, we've just finished this first six months of our fiscal year and our program operations, January through June 2023. And of course, we're the four-county service area, including Monroe County. So total trips that we have provided for all four counties this year for six months is 21,452. Of those, Monroe County is 6,448. Monroe County is up 35.6% from the same period last year, and system-wide, it's a 13.7% increase from last year over the four-county area. I did want to share that the average miles per trip is 13.45 in Monroe County, so, you know, typical for, you know, rural transit to be out on the roads and not just making those quick, short trips for the people that we're serving. And then the other thing I wanted to say is that the e-transit buses that you guys got us have been -- or vans have been wonderful. They've been really helping us meet that transportation need in Monroe County, and they are getting at least 120 miles per charge and not having any issues with them so far at all. So we're very happy to have them. But I'm happy to answer any questions you might have as well. I know we've got a lot going on, so.
Commissioner Thomas, any questions?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment, and that is that Ms. Myers has been working diligently with us as we've talked to Bloomington Transit about the upcoming change of service area situation we're facing for January. And I just want to ask everyone out there to encourage members of the city council to pass a ordinance to change the service area for Bloomington Transit. One of the board members mentioned at our last meeting that Bloomington Transit is the only transit in the state of transit authority in the state of Indiana that's required to only work and limited to only function within city limits. So we need to update.
Ken, TSD, can you turn the volume up?
-- transportation provider. So they receive the 5307 FTA program funds that are allocated based on the population within that urbanized area, and they have always just served the city of Bloomington. And rural transit has historically always provided transportation outside of the city of Bloomington, so city to county, county to city. And now we're not going to be able to provide anything that is both in -- both points within that urbanized zone beginning January 1, and that's the crux of the issue there. So I would support Bloomington Transit being allowed to expand through the urbanized area as defined by the census.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes, I was just wondering if you attribute the increase in ridership to anything in particular?
It's people getting back to just regular activity after the pandemic. So we took that big nosedive in 2020, and it's been climbing up ever since. So we're getting back to kind of normal transit needs. So it's a good thing.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
And I hope that the e-vehicles are helping to lower some of your costs for operations as well as being better for the environment. So I'm glad that they're working out. Thank you, Ms. Myers, for joining us today. Is there any other department that has an update? Seeing none. Let's move on to public comment. This is for items not on the agenda. I'll note that speakers are limited to three minutes each, and we'd like to have your name and whether or not you are a Monroe County resident.
Good morning. My name is Thomas Westgard. I live on Knight Ridge Road in the county.
Recording in progress.
Good. I'm being recorded. I am a, I guess, a handyman. I repair people's homes, for the most part, fix screen doors, build decks, paint walls. I've done a lot of hardwood floors, if you need a hardwood floor done. My purpose for coming to you today is last week I became aware that there was a proposal for contractor licensing, and I've been looking into that for the last week. And my ask today is just to be able to report some things that I've found. I plan to come back, but for now, if you would just hear the things that I've found and take it into consideration as you continue to deliberate that idea, I'd appreciate it. Specifically, I have two concerns and some possible solutions to those concerns. So far, what I've done to look into it is, number one, I went to the Vanderburg website and read the code that they have there for that county in Evansville. I also located licensing codes for the cities of Fort Wayne, Hammond, and Indy. So in terms of considering codes for the state of Indiana, we have four possible existing examples to take into account.
Recording in progress.
I -- that's a little distracting if that could go away, but I also talked with John Bates, and I've talked to several other contractors and other interested parties. I've kind of been working the phone quite a bit. Number one, this looks to me like a solution looking for a problem. As of now, I'm not able to determine that there's any deluge of consumer fraud cases coming out of the Prosecutor's Department. It would have been very interesting to see if the Prosecutor's Department had said, gosh, we've got a wave of these. I'm not aware of any. I'm not seeing them in the paper. I'm not hearing about them from any customers. So I think that is definitely a box that needs to be either checked or not checked definitively. In talking to my customers, I haven't heard a thing about a lot of issues with untrustworthy people. The main problem I hear is that they can't find anyone to do the work at all. And let's see. When I talked to Mr. Bates, he was very forthcoming, very friendly. I really appreciated talking to him, and I certainly compliment him on taking some time out of his day to talk with me. He said that the problems that they've seen primarily in Vanderburg are with rental properties. And I would propose that that is really more a matter for a department like HAND at the city, which the county currently doesn't have. If the issue is shoddy work at rental properties, I would support extending a HAND-type program to the county, and that would address the problem that Mr. Bates said they saw most down in Vanderburg. The second concern I have is barriers to entry. And actually, I didn't think about the Commissioner's statement that you read at the beginning of the thing, but if we're thinking about people with disabilities, people with, I mean, you name it, race, religion, everything that we improperly do to people to hold them back manifests itself in access to work. And if we add more barriers to entry for people, we're going to hurt the most vulnerable people the most. I thought in particular of, we have a lot of homeless people, and what do we want them to do with their time? I'd like them to be raking lawns, painting garden sheds, you know, finding that interim work that they can, not only because it creates them as a positive person going forward, it creates a self-image of, I'm a person who worked today. We want that. We don't want them to run into a situation where they're thinking, am I going to violate my parole by breaking the law by not having a license and insurance? Because that's -- that is what the Vanderburg County Code does. That's what it creates. The out-of-pocket expense is about $1,000. By the time you add the testing fees, the books, there's about, give or take, 200 bucks that's actually paid to the county. You have to buy insurance. You have to get a bond. You have to get your criminal record notarized. And do you know what a notary is? If you're a 16-year-old girl who wants to start out in landscaping, what Mr. Bates said is it's every type of work where you pick up a tool. I worked since grade school, mowing lawns, clipping hedges. I would have been breaking the law to do that. I don't really see that as an advance. The other thing about that is it concentrates wealth, because if you're Townsend Tree, they're international. They're all over the country and Mexico and Canada. They only pay about $1,000 a year, whereas the small contractor or the person who's living in a tent and trying to get out of a tent into an apartment, they're also paying $1,000 a year. That doesn't really make too much sense. Criminal record checks. You have to supply a notarized copy of your criminal record in this process. That's not really in line with how we use criminal records today. Yes, it can be important, but if I shoplifted underwear from Walmart three years ago--
Bye, Mr. Westgard. I appreciate you coming out today. When we discuss this, you're welcome to come back again, or you're welcome to send us emails expressing--
Okay, I'll come back, and I do have some proposed solutions. Just thank you for hearing me.
Appreciate that. Thanks for coming out, and you made some very good points. Is there any other public comment today? I don't see any on either here in the Nat U-Hill Room or online, so let's move on to
I move approval of the minutes for July 19, 2023.
Second.
Is there any corrections, discussion, additions? Not from me either. With that, Mr. Cocker, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
Thank you. Let's move on to approval of claims.
I move approval of the claims docket accounts payable July 26, 2023.
Second.
And we're not hearing certain things, but I hope that your motion included approval of the payroll for July 28, 2023. There is a glitch going on here, so we may have to switch in terms of how we're doing some of our motions and approvals. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none. Mr. Cocker, would you -- oh, wait. We have Mrs. Miller here with us to talk about this.
Good morning. The accounts payable claims docket for July 26, 2023 totals $1,701.98. The payroll docket for July 28, 2023 includes $1,425,952.40 in direct costs, and the remaining $582,928 were for indirect costs, for a grand total of $2,888.40.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. Oh, wow. Now, is there any public comment on this? Any comment from my colleagues? With that, Mr. Cocker, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
I will note for the record that we have reports from the Clerk of the Circuit Court for June of 2023, from the Treasurer for June of 2023, and from Waits and Measure for June 16 through July 15, 2023. Sorry, I'm having trouble with my everything here today. Okay, let's move on to new business, please.
I move approval of the Fleming Interior Group for Public Defender's Office Chairs Fund Name 2022 Geo Bond, Fund Number 4815, and the Amount $11,709.33.
Second.
And we have Mr. Kreider here with us.
Good morning, Commissioners. Richard Kreider, Fleet and Facilities Manager. This request is to approve the proposal submitted by Fleming Interior Group in the amount of $11,709.33 to purchase 29 office chairs for the Public Defender's Office. There's a five-year warranty on the high-wear mechanical parts and a three-year warranty on the seat and back covering. The chairs will be received and assembled by ASI and are replacing the older worn chairs throughout the facility.
Thank you. Questions or comments from my colleagues?
This is just something that's been really needed for a while, I know.
Yes.
I have no questions or comments, so is there any comment from the public? We have Ms. Renbeck, who is a member of the Public Defender's Office. Good morning. You're muted.
I don't have any comment. I just -- I'm obviously in support and here on behalf of my office to ask that this be approved. Thank you.
Great. Is there anyone else who wishes to make a comment on this? Seeing none. Mr. Cocker, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
And I appreciate seeing the pictures also that came with this.
You're welcome.
Thanks. Next item, please.
I move approval of the Strausser Construction Company, Inc., Justice Building Ceiling Replacement Contract, Fund Name 2018 Geo Bond, Fund Number 4811, in the Amount of $3,945.
Second.
Again, we have Mr. Kreider.
This request is to approve the proposal submitted by Strausser Construction Company, Inc., in the Amount of $3,945 to remove dry -- remove the drywall ceiling and replace with a suspended ceiling grid and tiles in two locations in the facility that received water damage due to recent drain line leaks. The new suspended ceiling will provide better access to plumbing lines in the areas. The scope of work includes removal of drywall ceiling and studs entirely, installation of new suspended ceiling with vinyl face ceiling tile, installation of two new LED lights by Elite Electric, installation of new air supply diffuser, and then the final cleanup.
Questions or comments?
No, I don't.
Again, I appreciate the pictures. It lets one see how necessary this kind of repair is needed.
I agree.
Yeah. Not a good situation. Yeah. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none. Mr. Cocker, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kreider.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
I move approval of the Esri Arc GIS Three-Year Enterprise Level Agreement, Fund Name Cumulative Capital Development Fund, Fund Number 1138, in the Amount of $263,300.
Second.
And we have Mr. Cron with the companion.
Good morning, everyone. So our Esri licensing that we've been using for our GIS program, it's pretty much the same licensing we've been using for over 15 years. Fortunately, our abilities have expanded, but the licensing we have doesn't allow us to expand on the capabilities that we now have with staffing and everything that's came onto the Surveyor's Office. So we're looking to upgrade to an enterprise-level licensing, which will allow us to greatly expand GIS services. I have John Baitin here with me. He is our county GIS coordinator, and he's going to talk a little bit about this. He knows a lot more about it than I do, so.
Hello, Commissioners.
Good morning, Mr. Baitin.
We've talked at length about this already, so I'm very excited to be here again today. If TSD can go to the next slide, I've got a very short PowerPoint just -- yeah, so current state of GIS across Monroe County, we have a very, very solid foundation. And TSD, you can just go through all of these animations as well to ending at continue to outsource GIS needs. If that makes sense, you can just click through if you're hearing me, TSD.
It's showing up on our screen, but not up on yours.
Oh, it's just showing this. It's an animated slide, because I was used to, as a professor, I would use animations because it makes PowerPoints less boring. For this case, though, it's not even -- I'll just talk about it. We have a very solid foundation. We have a server already, a GIS server, that hosts our data. We have an enterprise portal that allows us to host our own data online. So two really great -- that kind of is how mature our GIS is.
Recording in progress.
Top -- that's perfect right there, TSD as well. The majority of county users are most updated form of GIS, which is Arc Pro versus Arc about to be become obsolete. We recently deployed Fabric, which has really helped us mitigate those gaps and overpasses that exist within our parcel dataset. I've been offering internal educational opportunities for GIS users across Monroe County, and I continue to -- I will continue to do that as we kind of advance. And we do recently now will be having additional GIS support. In the past, it was myself and Tron who are the ones working on GIS. We just recently offered a position as a GIS technician to an outstanding candidate who will be starting in late August, which I'm very, very excited about with prior county experience, and so it's a great thing. However, we have very limited licensing across Monroe County. We have about 16 total licenses. Many of those are shared between departments and between users. Out of those 16, 11 of them are basic licenses, which will essentially allow you to view data. You really can't do any data manipulation or things like that. We have a growing demand for web GIS and field data collection, and we continue as a county to outsource a lot of our GIS needs, which we could be doing in-house, saving taxpayers money. TSD, if you can just go to the next slide quickly. This next slide will show kind of just the current use of GIS across Monroe County, if TSD gets to it. Oh, it's gross. That's all right. We basically have, I would say, 90% of county departments are utilizing GIS, not to the full advantage, but they're utilizing GIS quite rapidly. And we do have four new departments that are large, that are really coming forward with GIS today. That would be the Sheriff's Office, Emergency Management, which is actually just -- I just got off the phone with Justin Baker. They're actually just deploying a cooling station web app for the uncoming heat wave we're going to be having this weekend. The Health Department and the Recorder's Office, which has deployed that racial covenants map that was actually just recently featured in the state's geographic information office's newsletter. So we're getting some press here at a county level. Next slide, TSD. And so all of this shows kind of that we have this need for a expanded licensing and to sign on for this enterprise license agreement. We have this expanded GIS dependency across Monroe County, right? We have these new departments and offices that are utilizing GIS in their day-to-day kind of activities. This is going to allow us to continue to develop and continue to deploy these dashboards that are really showing data transparency to the public, right, as well as internally to county users. This is going to increase our efficiency as county employees. It's going to streamline operations, and it's going to function as this conduit, which GIS is, for collaboration between departments as well as between Monroe County users and the general public. And it's a natural progression, right? We have that great foundation. We just need to build a structure. And as I mentioned already, we have this new GIS technician position coming in to really support this growth, which I'm ecstatic about. So with that, I'm really requesting the support to sign on to this enterprise license agreement and help Monroe County kind of achieve its GIS needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baitin. Questions or comments? Commissioner Thomas.
Yes, thank you so much for working on this. We've had a few discussions about this, and this -- having that graphic up there just demonstrates how much GIS is integrated into all aspects of county government, and it's important to add in there as well the public. All of this serves the public in a different way, in a visual way. For example, the new road closure and construction map. It's amazing, and I can't thank you enough, and I think having that internal education is huge. So thank you for that as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like to thank you for all the work you've put into this.
Thanks.
And after the recent tornado, or actually the heat wave, people were asking how they could have found out about where the cooling stations were, and this is a perfect example of the kinds of things that this expanded GIS will allow us to do for people, and very quickly as well. It's very, very fast.
And it's awesome, too, seeing these departments taking the initiative to do this, right, and having the capacity to do it, so, yeah.
Right. Right. Are there any comments from the public on this item? Seeing none. I'll ask Mr. Cocker to call the roll, please.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
Thank you, Mr. Baitin.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cron. Next item, please.
I move approval of the CDWG Cisco Licensing and Service Agreement Renewal, Fund Name Cumulative Capital Development.
We've lost Commissioner to a freeze-up again.
Should I review? Yeah, we're going to go ahead and have Commissioner Jones make the motion.
I move to approve CW -- CDWG Cisco Licensing and Service Agreement Renewal, Fund Name Cumulative Capital, Fund Number 1138, in the Amount of $17,750.88.
I'll second. And we have Mr. Cron again with us.
Recording in progress.
It's quite the morning, isn't it? Anyway, our Cisco firewall, which is our first line of defense to keep bad actors from the outside from getting inside to our house, is up for renewal again. The software also includes a one-year extended service and support agreement that does offer hardware replacement should the appliance fail, and it also offers 24-hour, 24/7 technical assistance should we have a configuration issue or anything like that. So agreement is for the period of one year.
Comments or questions from my colleagues? We're seeing a lot more bad actors, and so clearly this is a needed kind of renewal, at least. Is there any comment from the public on this? Seeing none.
Recording in progress.
Seeing none. Mr. Cocker, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item, please.
I move approval of grant funding support for local schools, Fund Name Coag Supplemental Workforce, Fund Number 8111, in the amount -- well, here's the amounts and the schools. Bloomington Montessori, $4,000 for water bottle filling station. Harmony School, $2,500 internal communications equipment. Seven Oaks Classical School, $4,000 water bottle filling station. Disinfecting fogger, $1,365.99, and HEPA filters for $13,250. And St. Charles-- And St. Charles School, two AED units, $3,850. And $430 for two bleeding kits. $1,165.52 for four trauma bags. And $5,700 for sixty-go kits.
Does that actually add up to the...
I'll second. I'm sorry.
Does that actually add up to the $12,280?
No. Oh, that amount is not correct.
Okay. So we have Ms. Kelly here to talk with us about this.
Yes, good morning.
Morning.
So the Monroe County Health Department opted to help support local schools through the COAG grant funding. The primary focus of this grant is to provide a school liaison to be able to work directly with the schools, provide support services, update communicable disease plans, ensure that all of the schools are up to date with their vaccination clinics. All the schools have the support that they need for vision and dental screening. In addition, the schools, eight schools, chose to work directly with our school liaison and decided to submit project proposals for review. On July 20th, the Board of Health met and made recommendations as listed on the document.
Okay, questions, comments from my colleagues? And can we... I have a question also for Mr. Cockrell. Can we take these one by one in terms of the schools and their requests?
I believe you can.
Okay, thank you. So if I understood this right, in watching the Board of Health meeting, the Cisco grants are for emergency preparedness and are a direct result of what we all saw through the COVID pandemic. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So from that, questions, comments from my colleagues?
I believe that Dr. Ryder-Ban from the Board of Health is present. She may want to speak.
Dr. Ryder-Ban? Yes, she is here.
Good morning, Commissioners.
You don't need to speak...
I am Dr. Ryder-Ban.
Can you speak loudly, Dr. Ryder-Ban? It's... This room is not conducive to... Yes, thank you.
So I am on the Board of Health. I am an appointment by the Commissioners. And I'm not sure that what you've been given is truly reflective of the conversation. We've had multiple conversations in multiple months about these COAG grants and were very dismayed at what we were given from the schools, who apparently did not understand that this is about preparedness for not if, but when we have a next pandemic or next major event that will affect all of the schools, but also the entire community. What we... What you see before you are the few things that we could pick out from any one of those proposals that seemed even reasonable. What I particularly struggle with was that it says that we suggested that two AEDs were appropriate for St. Charles. What we did talk about that is just like this building has an AED, that perhaps every school should have an AED. That makes sense. It makes sense that our school coordinator then would be able to train people in how to use that appropriately, that it wasn't a toy and it's not something that can be used without some training. Again, the things that we truly agreed on was that water filters are appropriate to refill water so that children aren't sucking on the water fountains and that AEDs are appropriate. But a lot of these things are not necessarily appropriate. Had schools asked for perhaps HVAC filters for their systems rather than our replacing those systems, we could have gotten on board. But I'm not sure that what you see before you is truly reflective of what we believe is appropriate for the schools. And I would really want that done in conjunction with the school liaison, recognizing what are we missing in each of these schools and what is appropriate for their needs and for future preparation. Thank you.
So when I listened to this meet, the Board of Health meeting, they indicated that they felt, at least some of your colleagues, indicated that they felt that this Seven Oaks request for HEPA filters had some merit. As well as the electrostatic foggers. That it felt like they were okay with two AEDs at St. Charles, I think because there are two separate buildings, perhaps. I'm not sure about that. But they didn't feel that trauma kits were needed. And there just wasn't a whole lot else that came through when I was listening to this. Yes, they felt like every school should have one bleed kit and one AED. And I'm not sure how we make that possible. So I'm not sure where we go from here with this particular motion. Any direction from my colleagues here?
Is there a deadline on claiming these... Spot date?
The grant cycle did end...
Can you speak into it a second?
This particular grant cycle has ended, but with this type of grant, once the deliverables are met, these are our funds to retain and then spend as long as it's in alignment with the grant.
Well, then I'm going to recommend that we continue this to our next meeting and have whatever discussion we need to have, perhaps with our public health liaison, with the schools, working to provide us with a list.
So is that a motion?
Yes.
Second.
Is there any discussion about continuing this motion to continue?
I would like to say that we currently do not have a school liaison, so we are looking at contracting that service with IU Health through our public health nursing. I do have documentation from the state on a list of items that we could use. And alternatively, I would just like to suggest perhaps considering the Health Department to host a health fair where we can provide vaccinations and services that are in alignment with the grant.
Excellent. Okay, appreciate that. All right, so call for a vote on the motion to...
The motion to table. Commissioner Githens.
Yes, sorry.
Commissioner Thomas.
Need more sleep.
We'll go to Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
It seems that our system is not allowing the work, so I will say that is approved two to zero to one, with the abstention being technical and not...
Can we get Commissioner Thomas's vote now?
She's muted.
You're muted, Commissioner Thomas.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes, and you all were gone, so...
The motion is approved, three to zero. The motion to table is approved, three to zero.
Thank you. Next item.
I think at this point, I think at this point, I'm going to leave the meeting, because I cannot participate effectively. So I'm sorry to say, I will be leaving the meeting. But I will try to just watch and join at the work session if I can. Thanks.
Okay, so Commissioner Jones.
Move approval of Bobcat of Ellisville Service Agreement. Fund names, county general and non-reverting. Fund numbers, 1,000, 1178, and 1179, in an amount not to exceed $3,000.
I'll second that. And we have Ms. Whitmer here. Good morning.
Good morning. We have a few pieces of equipment that Bobcat of Ellisville services, and this will be a service agreement, so we can continue that.
Questions or comments?
No, I don't.
I don't either. Is there any comment from the public? Seeing none. Do you... Under this... Now that we're not partially virtual, how do we... Do you want to continue to do the votes?
If you want me to continue calling roll, that's fine. I think since there are... All the members are present, you could do voice votes if you chose.
Okay, then I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, two to zero. Next item, please.
Move approval of Spears Corporation Service Agreement. Fund names, county general and non-reverting. Fund numbers, 1,000, 1178, and 1179, in an amount not to exceed $5,000.
I'll second. And again, we have Ms. Whitmer.
The Spear Corporation is the company that put in our splash pad. And when we have major issues or issues with the UV system, we call Spears to come down with their experts to come in with our staff to correct it.
And I'll note for the record that this service agreement extends through November 1st of 2025. Correct? Okay. Any comments or questions?
No, I don't.
I'm really glad that the splash pad exists. I know it gets a lot of use, and it's fairly greatly appreciated.
And just so the public, it is free to use on Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, from 9:00 to 9:00. And you can rent the splash pad on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays.
Excellent, thank you. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none. I call for a vote on the Spears Corporation Service Agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, two to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Whitmer. Okay.
Move to approve ordinance 2023-26, transfer of a parcel to the town of Steinsville. This item is being continued from the July 19th, 2023 Commissioners' meeting.
I'll second that. Mr. Schilling.
Thank you very much, Dave Schilling, from the Legal Department. The county obtained ownership of a parcel in Steinsville through the tax sale procedures. And Steinsville has requested that the county transfer that ownership of that parcel to the town. And that can be done under Indiana law without consideration once an ordinance is adopted. And so that's what this ordinance was designed to accomplish. When we presented this last week, a member of the public appeared before the board and expressed an interest in purchasing the property. And I was instructed to look into the procedures that could be used to sell the property to the public. And so basically, there are three procedures. There's the general procedure that applies to, you know, sales, the typical sale of property, where there's two appraisals, two professional appraisals. The average of the two appraisals becomes the minimum sale price. And that is advertised and bids are selected or received for the sale of the property. That's a very expensive process. And for the reasons that are obvious, in the next two options, I would not recommend following that procedure. The second option applies to properties with an assessed value of less than $15,000. And this property is assessed at $6,700. So this procedure could be applied. And that simply involves getting an appraisal, one appraisal, but it doesn't have to be from a professional appraiser. A member of the county staff who has knowledge of property can come up with the appraisal. And if the property is less than $6,000, you don't need an appraisal. But since this is assessed at $6,700, we would have to have an appraisal. Then again, that would be published in the newspaper. The terms of sale would be published, and offers would be received. And if more than one offer was received, there would be a negotiation on price among the responders. The third option applies specifically to tax sale parcels. And that allows the county to transfer ownership of the parcel to an adjoining property owner for little or no consideration. And that doesn't require an appraisal. So all that would have to be done would be to notify adjoining property owners by certified mail, give them at least 14 days to respond with an offer, and then negotiate among the responders. Those are the three options. And the... Since they all require some kind of a notification period and response period, if you choose to go that route or want to look into it further, I would recommend just taking this item off the agenda. And we'll put it back, we'll put the matter back on when a decision has been made about how to proceed.
So how would that decision on how to proceed be made?
Well, you could decide which process you want to employ. Adjoining property, anyone who purchases property under any of these procedures is subject to a limitation that they cannot owe taxes to the county and purchase the property. So that's the one qualification or limitation on purchasers. So if you have any thoughts about how you would like to proceed... And actually, the second process recognizes the third process essentially and says that if an adjoining property owner is one of the respondents, you can just negotiate for whatever price you want. So just decide whether you want to transfer it to the town of Steinsville or whether you want to sell it to a member of the public. And then we can figure out the process that might work best.
Is the town of Steinsville... Do they have an adjoining property?
They don't have exactly an adjoining property. They own the property across the street from this. It's across Main Street.
Questions or comments?
Is it... Is this just something that's done in general? Or does it apply to the particular individual who was... I'm sorry. If we decide between these three possibilities, does the individual who's interested in it have any say? Or can they express their preference?
Certainly, they can express their preference. But you have the say.
Yes. Have you heard anything more from this individual?
No, I have not. But they're here today, Emily. Possibly.
So does... Can two and three be done simultaneously? Those two procedures?
Sure, I would suppose. But I believe that the second procedure can actually incorporate the third. But yeah, I think they could be done together.
I thought you said on the third one, you have to notify the adjoining property owners, whereas with number two, you wouldn't have to.
Yeah, that's the only... That is the only difference.
And I think number two doesn't preclude notifying the adjoining property owners. So I think you could go through number two and include the adjoining property owners. And then I think my... I will quote David Schilling and say that if an adjoining property owner under number two gets kind of a higher preference, if you want them to, because if it's an adjoining property owner, you can just negotiate with them. They have a... They are preferential buyer under those terms.
Understood. So are you... Are the two of you suggesting that we state our preference today? Do we need a vote on this? And then also, do we need to vote to remove it from the agenda? Or to at least continue it at another meeting?
Well, one, I think you've opened up the item, so I think you have to take... Well, one, I think you've opened up the item, so I think you have to take some action on it.
Okay.
I think you have to do something. I think whether you want to make a decision on this, if you do, I think that we're saying that the Legal Department will go ahead and move forward, but it's really your call on whether you're comfortable making a decision.
Yeah, there's no rush on this whatsoever, so.
I would be comfortable with going with option two, and if that is not, if nothing comes of that, then going to option three. But I'm also willing to continue this if we want to think about it more.
Well, I guess I was thinking that it would be good to go with option two and while also notifying the adjoining property owners, because that, those are very limited in terms of the number of those, and it wouldn't take a lot of, I don't think, resources to do that.
Yeah.
So I'd like to move that we ask Mr. Schilling to proceed with getting an assessed value for this while also notifying adjoining property owners, and that we continue this until we have that information available to us.
Second.
Okay. What, one, one item or point that I would make is, under the second statute, you need to make a determination that the typical, the normal procedure with the two professional appraisals would not be a cost-effective way to sell this property, so.
Then I amend my motion to indicate that it is not cost-effective to get two approvals on this very small plot.
I'll accept that amendment.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion on this? Seeing none. I'll call for a vote on continuing item H, which is ordinance 2023-26. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes two to zero. I hope we've met the needs today.
And I would just note for the record that that was only part of the motion. The motion also included instructing the Legal Department to begin the process of utilizing the option two as described.
Thank you.
And for clarification, shall I take this off the agenda until these procedures run their course?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Yes. This is all new to me. I've never heard of anything like this before, so I apologize to both you and to the public. Next item.
Move approval of DLZ regarding initial site review and evaluation. Fund name Edit Ban 2022. Fund number 4816, in an amount not to exceed $10,000.
I'll second that, and we have Mr. Cockrell here to talk with us about it.
Yes, and we talked about this last week at the work session. We had an agreement with DLZ for up to $10,000. That agreement stated that if, when they got to, I believe it was $7,500 through the work of that agreement, they would notify the county. And so they notified the county in June. We were preparing for an executive session on June 26, where that information was going to be reviewed and considered. And so this agreement is to increase the amount to $20,000 for that agreement, and it was for the work to, through that executive session on June 26.
Thank you. Is there any, any comment, questions, Commissioner Jones?
I would just like to emphasize that no sites for review have been identified, and that this is not an agreement to begin master planning of a site or jail design.
And I think technically, no determination has been made on, no final determination has been made on a site. We had, did have them actually review sites with this agreement.
Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none. Oh, wait, we have Seth. Please go ahead. You have three minutes. Please identify yourself and state whether or not you are a Monroe County resident. This is not, Seth, you're, you're
Recording in progress.
And so I would just either like some more information to the public that is, that can be best, that is able to be delivered while still keeping sort of like land purchase things kept confidential, which understandably I know they need to be, or if that information is not available, it just doesn't exist, I would hope that we would come to some of more of these conclusions, things I know that the J-FAC is working towards, before extending DLZ's budget, so that that money that, you know, funds are tight, and I recognize that, you know, $20,000 goes a long way in this community, and so if we're going to spend it on this, at the minimum, I would hope that it's at least spent in a way that is efficient. And this does not feel like an efficient use of money as best as I can see with the information I have. So that is my comment, and I thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Muchler. Is there anyone else who has a comment on this item? Seeing none. I'll call for a vote on the DLZ Initial Site Review and Evaluation Contract. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes two to zero. Next item, please.
I'm sorry. Move to approve ordinance 2023-25 to amend various traffic ordinances.
I'll second that, and we have Ms. Ridge here with us.
Good morning. These items were presented to our Traffic Commission Board on July 20, and they were unanimously
Recording in progress.
approved, and they are warranted by the MUTCD. We are amending 86-09 to add the following speed limit locations, 35, 35 mile per hour on Matthews Drive, 30 mile per hour on Eller Lane, and 20 miles per hour on Ponderosa Drive, McMullen Drive, Joshua Drive, and Charles Place. We are also amending ordinance 86-06 to delete a stop location that was in the ordinance, but it did not exist, so we're not really changing the traffic pattern in the subdivision. White River Drive from Mayfield Street, and then we add the following stop location, Mayfield Court from White River Drive.
Thank you. Comments or questions?
No, I don't.
I don't either. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none. I'll call for a vote on ordinance 2023 to amend various traffic ordinances. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes two to zero. Next item, please.
Move approval of the NDOT Agreement for Pedestrian Trail Improvements. Fund name local road and street. Fund number 1169, in the amount of $88,184.
I'll second. Again, we have Ms. Ridge.
This agreement is for project coordination and to provide fund, federal funding through NDOT for this project. It's for pedestrian trail improvements, which will be
Recording in progress.
flashing beacons, installation at various locations around the county. We've worked with the City of Bloomington and Monroe County Parks have rec at those seven locations. I know the funding has increased. We're just waiting for, it went through the MPO, so this will go in coordination with that contract, that it'll increase the funding to make it a 90% match from federal funds and 10% match from local.
Comments or questions?
No, I don't.
I will note that after these are installed, it will be the responsibility of the city and the county parks departments to maintain these particular, correct, these projects, the flashing beacons. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none. I'll call for a vote on the NDOT Agreement for Pedestrian Trail Improvements. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes two to zero. I hope we are able to get other people on here. Let's move on to the next item.
Move approval of a service agreement with Christopher B. Burke Engineering LLC. Fund name Stormwater. Fund number 1197, in the amount of $5,000.
I'll second this. Is Ms. Tatyia here, or Ms. Ridge will cover through this? Okay.
Sorry, Kelsey ended up having another meeting and a conflict, so. This agreement was presented to the Stormwater Board at their July meeting and was approved. This is for professional services for the municipal separate stormwater or storm sewer system, MS4 audit. This will be conducted on October 24th, 2023.
Recording in progress.
Thank you. Comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Note that part of this is required because an outside entity has to audit the Stormwater.
Correct. We just have to make sure we're following all the guidelines and our requirements, the five requirements each year through our MS4 program.
Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none. I'll call for a vote on the service agreement with Christopher B. Burke Engineering LLC. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes two to zero. Next item, please.
Move to approve ordinance 2023-20 Starts Rezone.
And we have Ms. Crisilius from the Planning Department. I'll second. I do not know what's going on with me today. Good morning, Ms. Crisilius.
Good morning, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Just in advance, you might need a little bit of grace with me today. The courthouse audio is cutting out sometimes, so if I'm not following, or you ask me a question or something, you might have to repeat yourself. I might not have heard you. So thank you. And we did, I believe you heard this presentation in June.
Okay, so we can see your, what you're saying to us, but others in the NatU Hill Room can't hear. You're coming through on, for us, on the closed captioning. I'm wondering if TSD can turn closed captioning on onto the other screens here in the NatU Hill Room, so that it's not just Commissioner Jones and me who can see this. And I, from what I understand
Recording in progress.
I understand others can hear if they're participating via Zoom. So let's try this again.
Okay, I can hear you.
Okay. Now you're frozen. Okay.
Okay, if you can hear me. I was wondering if you, you did hear this presentation in June. Would you like me to go through this quickly again, or would you like me to just start with updates?
Just updates. Updates, that's good.
Okay. All right, so this was the rezone from Agar R to LB, so through my presentation here. It's a couple of things. We do have some remonstrance from an adjacent property owner, Brad Bloom. I did send you those letters and the photos that he provided by email. And then so are updates. So you heard this on June 21st, and you had requested that the petitioner
I don't even feel like this is a, this is, Ms. Crisilius, I don't think this is fair to the public that TS, that our technical, that we're having technical problems that interfere with everybody having the right to participate in the way that we'd like them to.
Well, and I, I'm having trouble believing that you guys are going to be able to make, to gather all the information that's being given in a effective manner, right? The stop and start, I think, is not helpful. I'm curious if
I would, I would like to propose that we, that we continue both ordinance 2023-20 and 20, ordinance 2023-21 A, B, and C, because of the technical difficulties.
Well, I guess, when is your next meeting?
August the 9th.
Yeah, my other, my concern is, don't you have to make a decision on some of the
I think with the first one, it was August 14th was the, was the 90 days.
Right.
Okay. That was my only concern.
And I don't know about that. The next one, I haven't looked at.
That one's more recent.
That is not the top thing I would look for when I do, when I review this.
Yep, it's there. And
Anne says she'll come over here, but I don't know that that'll take care of
If we have Anne over here, will that take care of the problem?
I think it would take care of the problem from your perspective, I think, than you guys. I'm curious if the, because we seem to be getting feedback where we're not receiving information from a Zoom link. I don't know if the public who is watching on Zoom has that same issue.
From what I'm watching in the chat that's coming up at times, it looks as though we're freezing up also.
So.
So is, do we have any guidance here?
Did you make a motion?
Not yet.
I'm, I need to figure out 90 days from May 16th, I think is the
It'll be right around that same August
Recording in progress.
Probably the 14th as well.
14th, yeah.
And then the, the other question is, if the petitioners are here, whether pushing that off would be a harm to them, and maybe getting their input on that.
Do we, do we have petitioners here for the starts rezone? We have, we have somebody here, but not, not the petitioner. Are you actually the petitioner on this, sir? Just a minute, please, sir. I'm trying to figure something out here, and I'm not trying to push you off here. Would, would you be available on August the 9th to return on this?
I'm available.
No, I'm asking persons. And what about for the And what about for the Fieldstone? I don't know if there's anybody here on the Fieldstone rezone. I, I'd like to make a motion that we continue the ordinance 2023-20 and 2023-21 A, B and C until our next meeting, which will be August the 9th, 2023.
Recording in progress.
Second.
Is that, I, I do apologize to everyone concerned. I just am trying to be as thorough as possible and to hear all, everyone who's involved with this. And I think our technical difficulties are making that basically impossible. Is there any other discussion on the motion to continue? You are welcome to send us your, an email about that and we'll try to include that if that's, if that's possible, ma'am. Mr. Cockrell, could you guide us on that?
Well, I guess if we are taking this off the agenda, then it would be an item not on the agenda. And maybe you could reopen that public comment period for items not on the agenda and then she could come up and speak.
Okay, since we have taken this off of the agenda, well, wait, let's. All those in favor of removing, of continuing those two items signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes two to zero. And since it is now off, we will reopen discussion for items not on the agenda. Please give us your name and whether or not you're a Monroe County resident. And speak into the mic because this is really difficult in here. Thank you so much for your patience.
And whether or not I'm what?
A Monroe County resident.
Oh, yes. My name's Emily Creachy and I am a Monroe County resident. And I was coming to speak out in opposition to the building of the storage units on tract F of the Wiley Farm property. With the growing transient population in Bloomington that is now spreading into the county, these units create a safety issue. Storage units are known for being used as housing, drug trafficking, places for drug use. This proposal is in an established residential area with two elementary schools within walking distance. Placing the convenient storage on the property is incompatible with the surrounding properties and inconsistent with the well-being of the neighborhood. So for those reasons, I think a vote of no would be in order.
Thank you and thank you for being so concise.
You're welcome.
Great. Okay. So I believe we do have some appointments to make today. This, go ahead.
Yes, I would like to, may I do them all at once?
Yep.
Okay. I would like to move to appoint the following people to the Blue Ribbon Climate Resiliency Committee. And I believe it's for a term of one year for each of them. Scott Smith, Polk Township trustee, Kelsey Thetonia, MS4 coordinator, Iris O'Donnell Belisario is an individual of the public, Greg Grant with the Sierra Club, myself, Lee Jones as Monroe County Commissioner, Peter Iverson from the county council and Hader Attic as a non-voting ex officio.
I will second all these. Is there any discussion? I don't think we necessarily take discussion on appointments, but I want to thank you and Councilmember Iverson for working so quickly on this. So with that, I'll call for a vote on appointments to all these individuals to the Blue Ribbon Climate Resiliency Task Force. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero.
I would like to mention that there, that we're still looking for members for this task force. So if anyone has any interest in it, please apply. The application is on the front of our webpage.
And how many more individuals would you like to have on there?
Two more.
Two more? Thank you. I'll go on to announcements at this point. Again, grants are available for Indiana Solar for income qualified households to get solar panels on your residence. Again, last week or a couple of weeks ago at the Hoosier Hills food, fresh food distribution, we had hosted a, the commissioners had hosted a diaper drive and there was a table full of diapers, wipes and pull-ups that went very quickly. So we are again continuing to ask for donations of those wipes, pull-ups and diapers. You can do that by dropping them off in the Hoosier Hills Food Bank barrel that's sitting in the courthouse rotunda and, or at Hoosier Hills Food Bank. This will be given out at their food distribution on August the 11th. And again, these, these went very quickly and this was the first time that that had ever occurred out there and they were very greatly appreciated. I will remind public that vaccinations are available at the Monroe County Public Health Clinic at 333 East Miller Drive for students on August the, was it the 5th, was it?
Oh, I'm afraid.
Or 8th, maybe. Anyway, there, you can call there. We are accepting applications for limited boards and commissions and I would urge people who are interested in capital improvement board. Oh, wait. Oh, that was the county council. I think the county council made their appointment last night of Eric Spoonmore, but the city of Bloomington and the mayor have appointments also to the capital improvement board. So please contact their offices if you're interested in serving on that. This will cover the expansion of the current convention center. We continue to have virtual office hours for the commissioners and they, mine have worked better than today's meeting that has gone. We do continue to have blood drives. The next ones are August 23rd from 1:00 to 7:00 and August 24th from 1:00 to 7:00 at Ivy Tech in Shreve Hall. And following that, there are two in September on the 7th from 1:00 to 6:00 and on the 8th from 10:00 to 3:00. As we were talking earlier with the GIS, the expansion of that, this is a time when one reminds residents that you can sign up for Monroe County Alert Notification System and that's for all weather and health related emergencies. You can do this at co.moneroe.in.us. And I will also remind people that for those who are income qualified, the township trustees will provide additional funds to assist people in paying their rent or utilities. So if you're in that situation where it becomes important, please go to your township trustee, get the help you need so that you can stay housed. Do you have any announcements?
No, I don't.
Okay, well, with that, we do have multiple items on our work session. It's 11:24. How about if we come back at, say, 11:40? Does that give everybody enough time to try to get things rebooted? We'll see how that goes. And I will note that we are not meeting next week, but the next commissioners' meeting is on August the 9th. Thank you, everyone.